Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the March twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five Culver Town Council meeting to order. Before we get started, I'd like to remind those in the room and those online that this meeting is being recorded and your participation through consent to be rebroadcast on the Town YouTube excuse me, Town YouTube channel. Roll call, please.
William Clevenger.
Present.
Justin Cry.
Present.
Jenny Monroe. Dana Neer.
Here.
Sally Ratchardi.
Here.
Will you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which has passed. A nation of our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the March eleventh, two thousand twenty five regular meeting. Anybody have a chance to look at the minutes and are there any additional corrections?
Make a motion to approve the March eleventh regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Ratchardi moves to approve the March eleventh meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Monroe. All those in favor, second by us saying aye.
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 You have to do a roll call.
No, roll call, I'm sorry.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Cry.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Mr. Neer.
Aye.
Mr. Ratchardi.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is public concern, utility or ordinance violation appeals. First of all, anyone in the room? Yes, ma'am. Will you identify yourself, please?
Yeah. Janelle Brockner O'Neal, one six five four one, Carrot Court, Indiana, four six five six three. I read on the twenty twenty five in the Culver Citizen, Mr. Dante presented two proposals to serve as Culver's attorney. Attorney Sean Cerise's proposal included an annual sum of forty eight hundred dollars to attend the regular meetings of the council and provide legal services at those meetings. All other legal work, two hundred and fifty eight dollars per hour. Attorney Kevin Tanskerly's proposal was thirty five hundred dollars monthly flat fee. Exceptions would include litigation of unusual complex project or serving as local council or bond. I have a couple of questions. First, if you could tell me what Mr. Tanskerly's hourly rate is because it was not stated in the Culver Citizen article that was wrote on March twentieth. Like Mr. Cerise's quote of the flat hour, two hundred and fifty eight dollars for additional work outside of meetings. Does anybody know what the hourly rate is?
According to our interview, it's three hundred dollars an hour, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay. And is, I don't know, is Mr. Tanskerly from Culver or Marshall County?
He's not from Culver or Marshall County.
Just wondering.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online?
There's one person that just said no. One person just unmuted.
Okay. Go ahead, please, and identify yourself.
They muted again. All right.
They muted again.
They're muted again.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, if there's nobody else in the audience or online, I'd like to read two letters into the record if I might.
Yes, please.
Thank you, sir. Twenty seventh March, two thousand twenty five Culver Town Council meeting, public. I'm JD Councilman, residing at six forty one Forest Place. I would like to express to the town council my support for retaining Sean Cerise as town, excuse me, Culver Town Attorney. Thank you, JD Councilman, six forty one Forest Place. Thank you, JD, for participating. I also have a letter here from Patricia Stallings. Pardon me while I get down here. Dear council members, I encourage you to continue to employ our attorney, Sean Cerise. Having grown up in Culver, attended Culver Community Schools, and attended Valparaiso University Law School where he earned his law degree. He has worked in our area since then and is highly regarded as a municipal lawyer. Many in Culver have a pride in his success, honesty, and loving family. Who could protect and represent us better? Patty Stallings, five oh six Lakeshore Drive, Culver, Indiana. And we thank you, Patty, for sending the letter. Thank you.
I want to just ask.
Anyone else online, please? Mr. Dante, for the benefit of the, those people may be online. Would you kind of go through the process that you undertook?
Absolutely, sir. The RFP for the attorney, I sought the the approval of town council in December. I do believe it's been a while back, but it was December. I sought the approval of council to put out two RFPs actually at the same time. One was for the peer. One was for the attorney. Mr. Cerise has done a fine job. He stepped in and the continuity of it all. But we wanted to go make sure that, like most responsible towns, RFP and take a look at what's out there. I produced probably about ten copies of this thing. To be honest with you, I contacted five people. Out of those five contact points, one was interested and withdrew. The other two did not respond and request the RFP. I got, I received, excuse me, two RFPs in return. One from Mr. Cerise and one from Mr. Tankersley. Mr. Tankersley is in Plaski County, a former county attorney. To your question, I believe that was the question. And so those two responses were brought before the council. In full disclosure, they were different proposals essentially that needed to be considered. And there were different models of an attorney. Taking some time to work through and talk through, we conducted an executive session on Friday of last week to talk to Mr. Tankersley. Mr. Cerise correctly pointed out that he, as an independent contractor, he is not allowed to participate in that interview. Mr. Tankersley was interviewed and his, also his legal, paralegal, Colleen Denham, who is from Culver, attended that. That's all I can speak about in the executive session. The council has been aware of the proposals, I do believe, since the end of January and in consideration of those and receiving public feedback and also considering each model. That's the process that we underwent. And if there's any questions about the process, I'd happily entertain them.
Anyone in the audience have any question for Mr. Dante? Anyone online? Anyone else on any other matter before we move on? Full business, attorney contract. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move to retain Sean Cerise as our attorney and move forward with the process of getting these RFPs wrapped up.
Mr. Cry moves to retain Mr. Cerise. Is there a second?
I will second that, please.
Mr. Neer, seconds. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Nay.
Mr. Cry.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Nay.
Mr. Neer.
Aye.
Mr. Ratchardi.
Nay.
I have a motion to on the floor for the same question.
I'll make a motion to accept Kevin Tankersley as our town attorney.
Mr. Ratchardi moves to move for Mr. Tankersley. Is there a second? Fair seconds. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Cry.
Nay.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Mr. Neer.
Nay.
Mr. Ratchardi.
Aye.
Well, thank you. It's been a pleasure working for you this past year or so, and I will get with Kevin and coordinate, you know, the transition, getting any work product I have with over to Mr. Tankersley. And I think the only more pressing thing that I'll stay involved in is the pending litigation of the Campbell subdivision appeal that was filed until such time as Mr. Tankersley has made his appearance in that case. So you've got to help yourself. Thank you very much for your service.
I also assume that the contract that we had on the zoning would still
I was about ready to ask that question. If you'd like for me to do so, I will certainly under that.
I would like to keep, I would like to ask the council if we could, for continuity in the work that you've already put in, if we could maintain Mr. Cerise for that work as well as the work on the solar that is still going on, if we can have consultations there as we transition, I would appreciate that.
Anybody want to make a motion to the effect?
Of the contract that Phil.
Ms. Monroe moves to have the contract fulfilled. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Ratchardi. Roll call, please.
Can I ask for clarification that which, like, the solar contracts, that which specific?
We did a contract that Sean was working on, the zoning ordinance, and I think we also at one point added vacant building.
Yeah.
And it said that if that costs more, because that wasn't part of the original zoning contract that we had. He, Jeanette had started that project, but when she became judge, it got passed on Sean. And there's been some work done on that.
I just want to make sure the motion reflects exactly what you're intending.
Yeah, to fulfill completing of that zoning contract.
And then you had added something.
I was asking about the solar, as Stephen. Yeah, I just considered that part of the zoning revisions. I mean, it's all kind of related. Thank you, Kim. So I'll make sure we have that. Yeah, okay.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Cry.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Mr. Neer.
Aye.
Mr. Ratchardi.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, under new businesses, Dunes Pay application number five.
Yes, we are working through the Dunes funding. I would ask that the council approve the Dunes Pay application number five in the amount of one hundred ninety thousand, three hundred fifty dollars and zero cents. And approve Mr. Clevenger signing the application for payment. It has been vetted by Mark Sullivan from Midwestern Engineers and and so he has confirmed that all the charges are effective.
I make the motion to approve the Dunes Pay application number five and approve Mr. Clevenger's. And authorize Mr. Clevenger to sign.
It's been moved by Ms. Monroe. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Ratchardi. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Cry.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Mr. Neer.
Aye.
Mr. Ratchardi.
Aye.
I have a couple of other things in relationship with the, this pay app. I would also ask council to approve Mr. Clevenger's signature on exhibit B. And that is for the dispersment request form for the construction account in the amount of one hundred ninety thousand, three hundred fifty dollars and seven cents. Thank you.
It's been moved by Mr. Ratchardi.
Second.
Second by Ms. Monroe. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Cry.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Mr. Neer.
Aye.
This is, Mr. Ratchardi.
Aye.
Last motion for this, for the Dunes. And then I also would ask that you approve Mr. Clevenger's signature on exhibit C, which is a request for deposit to the reimbursement account, request number five, for the amount of one hundred ninety thousand, three hundred fifty dollars and seven cents.
It's been moved. It's been moved by Mr. Ratchardi. Is there a second?
I'll second that, please.
Second by Mr. Neer. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Cry.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Mr. Neer.
Aye.
Mr. Ratchardi.
Aye.
And that's off for the Dunes for a bit.
Next on the agenda is the peer contract.
Mr. President, I provided the contract to the council for your perusal. It mimics what was in the RFP with stipulations on dates and penalties. We've obtained the signatures from our contractors. It's before you for approval tonight and signature tonight. I know they're eager to get busy to work and we would like to seek your approval of the contract this evening.
I'll motion to approve authorizing Phil to sign the contract.
I'll second.
If I might, I actually included all signatures of the council if I might.
Then I'll just motion to approve the contract.
Your motion was favored, sir.
There's a motion made to approve the peer contract. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Cry. Thank you, sir. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Cry.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Mr. Neer.
Aye.
Mr. Ratchardi.
Aye.
Anything else on that, Mr.?
I have a question.
Yeah, sir. Mr. Mason, you ahead.
I assume that they have a workman's comp agreement.
They do. The insurance has been submitted. I appreciate that question. It was oversight.
And I appreciate that you will keep on checking that on a regular basis to make sure it's still in force. When I was on the council a hundred years ago, we had an incident where we hired a contractor. They had workman's comp. As soon as they got the job, they canceled the insurance.
I appreciate that advice and.
Please keep, keep that in mind.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we'll do. We're gonna be, we're gonna be putting back out for services after the spring, so. Made for it for a year, you guys aren't, okay, we're good. I think Mr. Mason's talking about long-term stuff. Keep a check on it, and I appreciate the advice, sir. Thank you.
I assume you're the people that are going to do the peer contract.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Board and commission reports.
Look, look. I've got the building commissioners report before me, Mr. Gorski provided me this evening. February twenty twenty five, building permits applied for were eleven, eleven in January, so we're, we're there. Seven of those were Culver Equities LLC, fees for building permits and improvement location applications. The total for building permits, fence and roof, roof permits, excuse me, and BCA and plan commission applications. Culver received one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars for February compared to nine thousand four twenty six in January. Although the permit count is the same as January, the structure type is different accounting for the lower fee received in the permitting. Zone ordinance update, the certified proposal to amend the Culver zoning ordinance regarding solar energy systems and energy storage systems from the plan commission was approved to favorably recommend to the town council. This will be on the council's agenda on April tenth. And it is, it was a good piece of work. I think it reflects Culver's attitude towards solar, and I hope the council will agree. Unsafe structures, nothing to report for February. TRC was nothing to report for February. Plan commission, the plan commission had a public hearing and voted for the solar energy proposal and storage proposals, excuse me, ordinance. This was favorably recommended to you, the town council. The town attorney will have the update on the legal case pending with the plan commission. The BCA heard pre-case two requests were granted and one case was withdrawn. And that is sincerely Steve Gorski, Building Commissioner of Culver.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Pre-commission.
John Hellfree. I just want to convey that tomorrow night, we're going to have our first meeting of the year. And the agenda is, I'm in the office and we had talked about the budget. We're also going to have a dialogue with the Indiana University representative. She's going to be on Zoom. Karen gives me some kind of teaching tomorrow about how to work that.
We're gonna get you set up.
She's expected to be on Zoom. We have four members now. Paul Berry has joined us. And he looks like he's got very impressive, first man, he's a graduate of West Point. And so it looks like he's going to be a good asset. The other one, Mark Demore, has stated his want to be a candidate. We have a problem with the resident language in the ordinance. It says residents only, and he's just outside of that. And I asked a couple of months ago if that's going to change, because Mr. Cerise said that wouldn't be a problem. We just have to do it so we could get Mark on the board. I don't know if he'd still be involved in that or not.
I think I had to share that this is a locally created board. There's not like a state statute that has requirements of the membership, so it'd be free to the council to adjust those terms of the ordinance to make membership more broad.
So as soon as we do that, sort of Mark can get on the board and we can have a full contingent. The only other thing I have Kevin Berger reached out to us because he's got quite a few big trees on his property. And all of a sudden, he got, he's got all these flags around there, but nobody seems to know why the flags are there and they're gas and that type of stuff. He's afraid he might lose the trees at some project that's being planned, but nobody seems to know anything about it. He came to us because trees. I don't know if he knows anything or not.
I do. And I've had a conversation with Kevin. I, he, it's, it's in the Easter Day properties, I think, if we're talking about the same ones. And what they're looking at is for the Cass Street sidewalk project, the trail project that's going in. I'm in communication with them. I can't say that what, I haven't had a response yet about those trees. I share his concern. Obviously, they're mature trees. We try to keep mature trees in Culver. And part of the tree commission, we work hard. And so I told Kevin that I would advocate to try to keep those trees at all costs. If that's not something I can't promise, so it's beyond me, but I can keep communicating it. But I had that conversation with Kevin. I appreciate you bringing it back up, and we'll keep an eye on it and see what we can do. Okay? You bet.
Is it related to the trail project?
I believe that's, because when I looked, there's so much.
I was gonna say they marked the other end.
They, they did, and I'm not sure because it's across what I thought was going to be. So Bob's back on Monday. We're going to take a look at it together. There's been, by the way, if you see a lot of red dots, yellow lines and everything going on through town, which was part of the manager's notes, I was jumping ahead a little bit, but you brought it up. There's a lot of work going on. NIPSCO is looking at doing some pruning projects, tree projects to try to improve not having our electricity knocked out by branches or wild squirrels running out into transformers. We're also taking a look at a lot of gas projects and stuff going on. It's the spring of the year, so it's going to be a lot of yellow paint and red paint. So hang in there. I'll try to communicate the best I can. So that's what's kind of going on in town. Thank you. Okay, look at that. Roll right into that effortlessly. I lose my spot. Oh, there's my notes. Motion to, yes, I have several contracts for this evening for the council, and thank goodness it's a roll call vote, right? The first one is to, a motion to approve, I'm seeking from the council of Sellers' contract for the landscaping. The amount is five thousand eight hundred fifty three eighty five. It's the typical contract that we've retained with them through the years. They are going to meet with Bob and I on Tuesday also to discuss where we're at in terms of our satisfaction. If there's anything that they would like to know that we could do better. There's also some services I might bring before the council to see if there's something you'd like for the town. They're going to offer some new stuff to Bob and I. But tonight, I'm just seeking the approval of five thousand eight hundred fifty three eighty five for our annual contract with Sellers.
Has that amount changed from last year?
It has not. Last year, I can't give you any more projections than that, but it was in line with it, and I misspoke. I'm not asking council to approve. I'm asking the council if I can approve and say on behalf of the town its electronic contract, so. Yep.
I'll make the motion to approve the signing of the contract.
Ms. Monroe moves to approve the signing of the contract.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Ratchardi. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Cry.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Mr. Neer.
Aye.
Mr. Ratchardi.
Aye.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I also have a contract before me from DMA Elevator and Lifts. It is for our maintenance for the beach lodge, and the amount is for two thousand eight hundred thirty zero zero. I'm asking for approval from that tonight for the Parks Department.
It's been moved. It's been moved by Mr. Ratchardi to approve the elevator contract. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second, Bill.
You're too far away.
Go ahead, Jenny.
I saw that sun.
Justin already did.
Mr. Cry did. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Cry.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Mr. Neer.
Aye.
Mr. Ratchardi.
Aye.
Does that contract need to be signed?
It does not. No, it does not. I'm just seeking approval. I appreciate that, both for the cursing. Before, may I have the Marshall County Economic Development Corporation Service Agreement? It's one that we've entered into. I'm asking the council's approval. I think it's for our standard amount of ten thousand dollar commitment to MCEDC. That's always easy to say. It looks like we're asking, I'm making, I asked for a motion to have our president sign on behalf of Culver, please.
Good question, Bill. I think in the past, we had like deliverables in that agreement. Is it, it was just for CRC? Okay.
And that was the stuff, yeah.
Okay, so it's for their father current. All right, I just wanted to confirm. I knew that was a CRC thing.
Permission to approve the C.
MCEDC.
MCEDC.
Yes. Permission to approve. Yes, I'm making the mention.
I'll second that motion.
Roll move. Thirty seconds. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Cry.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Mr. Neer.
Aye.
Mr. Ratchardi.
Aye.
Before, may I have the visitor center agreement? It is an agreement for thirty thousand dollars. I think we paid quarterly at seventy five hundred dollars a quarter. This agreement supports the visitor center and it's, and it's advocacy for Culver and bringing people in. I'm asking for a motion to approve tonight and the signature of the council as a whole. As a whole, excuse me.
I'll make a motion to approve visitor centers, thirty thousand dollars.
Mr. Ratchardi moves. Is there a second?
I would love to have them come in and present first, but it's just me. I don't know. One of you on a second, I would support it, but.
I'm refusing myself given those circumstances. I was waiting for the roll call. So I'm not going to be.
I will go ahead and second the motion, and in the meantime, maybe have them come in at some point. They do come in and present to CRC every year, so I do know what we're working on, and I fully support it.
We'll have them come, try to get them in.
Yeah, so I'll officially second the motion.
Okay, we do have a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Cry.
Refusing myself.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Mr. Neer.
Aye.
Mr. Ratchardi.
Aye.
Thank you, council. I did note that for April, we'll try to get them in and have a fair protection. Find Justin to babysit. Get it right.
True.
We can wait till later in the year.
Position, I have a position that I would like to ask council approval for this evening. It's one that we've discussed in the past. The position is for an assistant clerk. As we grow and with the anticipation of an onlineing of the dunes and a lot of the demands of the utilities that are going on, plus window maintenance, we are seeking a part-time position. This is a part-time position that we anticipate being five days a week, eight AM to one PM through discussion, both with Karen and Julie and myself. The position essentially, the job entails customer service, cash management, database maintenance, data entry, processing documents and forms, and organizing receipts and documents. As we grow with the increasing frequency, Julie's being demanded to take care of the utility ends with everything being online. And we really need somebody to be operational, especially in those morning hours. So the part-time job would be per salary ordinance. We'd have to make an amendment to the salary ordinance. We haven't determined salary yet. We don't anticipate it being beyond what obviously we've already put aside for the clerk, assistant clerk's position, lower than Julie's, obviously. We're asking approval this evening from the council to post the job and to seek applicants for it.
I think that's a great idea. Do you have a space carved out to for the next person?
We're thinking.
Sure. Yep. What is gonna be the answer when somebody asks how much does this job pay them? Let me put this up. I can anticipate. We were thinking eighteen to twenty to be competitive. I don't, I don't like answering that question until I turn my head to the left, but that's what we were thinking. We think we can be competitive and attract. I think there's two things. Have to go into a monologue here. There's two things that might be attractive to this position. First of all, it's eight to one. That leaves the afternoons off. That brings into, maybe into a parental, who would like the afternoon to pick up kids and do their thing, and that was a consideration that I made. The second thing is, I think at twenty dollars an hour, eighteen to twenty, excuse me, I don't want to lock in on that twenty number. We could be competitive enough to attract a, a professional individual. The other thing that we're anticipating as we move forward is, is bringing this person in and training them more and more and let them grow into the job more and more, and we can see where that will go. So we're not looking for a part-time solution. We like this job to be a permanent addition and to let it grow.
So really, I think we're authorizing, one, the job, creating this position, two, um, allowing for that salary range, knowing we have to update the salary ordinance, because that will have to be posted on the next agenda.
I would agree.
But so that you can actually post the position, knowing it would be an eighteen to twenty an hour range, I think is I think we want maybe two separate motions. One is a motion to approve the position, and I to post the position at an eighteen to twenty dollar an hour salary, I suppose, as, and a part-time. Motion to approve the part-time position for eighteen to twenty dollars.
Mr. Monroe moves to approve the the position of assistant town clerk, eighteen to twenty dollars an hour. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Charlie. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Hi.
Mr. Croy.
Nay.
Mrs. Monroe.
Hi.
Mr. Neer.
Hi.
Mr. Charlie.
Hi.
So then I think we probably need to just, do I need to authorize you to or just put the salary ordinance on the next agenda?
We'll take care of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't need a motion.
Thank you. About a second. So we're not having two separate motions then? Is that the first one?
Yeah.
If I approve the position, I want to wait until we figure out how much it's gonna pay before we post it. That's why I voted no.
Okay. That's fine.
So if there, I guess if there's not a, if we're just doing one motion, then I would obviously.
Yeah, I, I think I was trying to give them permission to post it at a rate also, so that they can post something. So we still, though, have to update the salary ordinance.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. So if, and if eighteen to twenty is not a range you would be comfortable with, that's okay to say no.
You know, your salary ordinance written, just so it says up to a certain amount anyways, so. Yeah, that's a danger.
Yeah. I mean, we need to go back and, I don't, I honestly haven't looked at recently. They said exactly. We wanted to kind of wait until
Yeah.
we knew, and I mean, we really hadn't talked about posting it with the salary, so that salary range doesn't need to be in there, need it to change.
That's why we were gonna leave it as to be determined by salary ordinance.
Yeah.
Because we can, we can post a job without it, and that could be a contractual, after the job is received, we can do a contractual.
In case you find this.
That's. Well, not contractual.
With discussion.
We can have a discussion about it at least. Sorry, I use the word.
I know we already did the vote, but if you would like for me to amend that vote, just to approve of the position being posted, I'm comfortable with that.
If, if it, if it's the council's pleasure, I would prefer to post it as to be determined by salary ordinance, so we can have full consideration.
Okay.
I don't feel like we, we gave a raise there, but we haven't really given it a full consideration yet.
Then let me rescind my original motion and make a motion just to approve, uh, advertising for the part-time position of assistant clerk.
Mr. Monroe moves to advertise for a part-time position. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Charlie. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Hi.
Mr. Croy.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Hi.
Mr. Neer.
Hi.
Mr. Charlie.
Hi.
There we go. That's fair. One special permit this evening, and I'll get off the stage. Uh, August ninth, two thousand twenty-five, I'm assuming we're gonna get this approved, uh, early, because there's a lot of planning involved. Eight thirty to eleven thirty, it's the Lake Max, uh, triathlon. Great event, five hundred athletes, one thousand guests. Uh, Culver Academy's town of Culver and around Lake Max. Uh, Dana Neer is the director of this, eight thirty-one North Lakeshore Drive. We know Dana. Um, annual Lake Max triathlon duration, our gotta work on your writing, Dana. Uh, it's to raise funds for local nonprofit groups. Uh, the event parking plan is at Culver Academy's. Normal street closings. Wayne has the map. He's far familiar with it. Um, and so is Chad. Yes, on campus, NA, all trash on Culver Academy's campus. Um, EMT needed on campus and possibly on the roads if there is a bike accident, and I know our EMTs and paramedics are always available there. Um, anticipate using sound, yes, it's quite the party, no alcohol. Uh, we've got all the department signatures. I'm seeking the approval for the town council president to give signature and approval.
So moved.
Been moved by Mr. Monroe to approve the triathlon event. Seconded by Mr. Charlie. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Hi.
Mr. Croy.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Hi.
Mr. Neer.
That's Dane.
Mr. Charlie.
Thanks. Hi.
Very good. Appreciate it. Thank you, council. Last but not least, some updates for you. Uh, the week of the seventh through the eleventh of April, uh, the town will be conducting, I've been told by Bob Porter, the hydrant flushing. Be advised, watch your laundry schedule. Uh, we'll try to help everybody know when we're moving through. Uh, spring cleanup of the yards. We like to remind people that when they put leaves out to the side, could you please keep the garden waste twigs, branches separately? It does cause havoc with our ability to suck up the leaves. If you do have twigs, I know you could put them off to the side, and the guys have been trying to get out and, and get around. We had a great, um, part-time helper last year that was able to do it. We're seeking that position again. Um, as, but we're still yet to fill it, but we're getting some headway there. Um, I think that is the updates for this evening, and I'll get off stage. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Simon, your report, please.
To say something other than roll call. Um, I have a couple of claims over twenty-five hundred for your approval. Peerless Midwest, thirty-four thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. That is coming out from the ARPA funds, and that is a planned expense for the well um, that we just are installing. Uh, Motorola Solutions, eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and ten cents. That is for EMS radios, and those are funds that were encumbered from twenty twenty-four. And then finally, Xylem ITT Water and Wastewater, three thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. That is for sewer materials and supplies.
Motion to approve the claims.
Motion to, Mr. Monroe moves to approve claims over twenty-five hundred dollars. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Croy. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Hi.
Mr. Croy.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Hi.
Mr. Neer.
Hi.
Mr. Charlie.
Hi.
Thank you. Um, just to let you know, I sent stuff out on Towndown and Lake, but the garage sale, townwide garage sales are April twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. If you want to participate in the garage sale, be on the list. Please get me the information by the Tuesday prior to. I'll take them by email, or you can stop in or call, whichever. Um, Kevin and I are working on the personal policy manual review. We, uh, had a, a team's call with Kathy Walker from New Focus HR Monday, Tuesday? Tuesday. Um, for a first read through the policy manual. There's what, seventy-five pages? Um, and it took us probably two hours to go through. Um, Kevin and I are working through the review that she did with the update, the, um, the recommended updates and the necessary updates, and we'll send it back to Kathy, and then with the second draft, and we'll provide, um, copies to department heads and council for review um, and additional edits. So, um, that is to come. Um, a lot of work.
Working on that, Karen.
Yeah, definitely.
There's a lot of work coming down the pike, so, um, in variety of ways. Uh, just a reminder, so let you all know, um, just for part of internal controls, reports that are due in April that are required by the state. There's a TIF management report that's due April fifteenth. And then the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds report, which is SLRF, um, is due April thirtieth, and that is, um, for us to report on how we're using those ARPA funds that we were given. So hopefully we'll get those spent this year and be done and, and move on. Um, the last thing I have is I sent out to all of you information about the What's Up Twenty-Four Seven meeting that's coming up. Um, it's, I'm excited about it. The Secretary of State's Office is sponsoring In My Community Initiative and partnering with What's Up Twenty-Four Seven. It's something that I've kind of been trying to get some momentum under for a number of years. Um, but his, the Secretary of State's Office is providing access to this application for free. And, um, basically, the, the purpose of it is to provide visibility to the unique acts, assets of every local business and every community within the state of Indiana. And, um, there will be a presentation from ten to eleven thirty AM on Thursday, April three, at the Reese Theater in Plymouth. I'd encourage you to attend if you can. Um, if you can't, share information, um, and encourage other people to come. So, I have.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add is Kevin had asked to give an update about that Campbell, uh, Land Commission lawsuit, uh, it's just a challenge to the approval of the subdivision. We obtained a extension of time to, to, uh, turn over the record materials to, uh, the petitioner's counsel, uh, just due to the fact that they requested uh, transcripts be made of, free of the plan commission meetings, which we thought might take a little bit more time, but, uh, the firm that, um, we hired to do that has already produced those. So I'm working with Steve for us to get the rest of the materials, uh, collected, and we should be able to turn that over to, um, the petitioner's counsel soon. Then I'll, I'll work with Mr. Tankersley to get that transitioned over. The cost of the transcription is something that, under the state statute, can be billed. You'll, you'll have a bill for that from my office, but then we'll be able to build that back to the, um, to the attorney for the petition.
Anything else?
Nothing more.
Council issues. Mr. Mayor.
I do not have any.
Mr. Monroe. Mr. Charlie.
I don't have any.
Chair has nothing. Mr. Croy.
Thought a lot about, uh, whether or not I was gonna say anything in watching Sean Cerisi's professionalism tonight. Um, I'm gonna choose not to say anything, Mr. President.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, failed to bring up one, uh, comment here on, on the ordinance for the tree commission under, uh, duties and responsibilities. One of them is removal or disposition of trees and shrubs. That was changed in twenty twenty-three. We can go ahead and amend that with the residents.
Thank you, John.
Comment.
Appreciate that.
Say in conjunction with the street department, which would allow some
Flexibility there.
Flexibility in case it comes back to us.
Appreciate that. Uh, we'll get, we'll put that on the agenda. I'll ask permission to do that tomorrow night. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. So moved. Moved by Mr. Charlie. Second. Seconded by Mr. Croy. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Hi.
Mr. Croy.
Hi.
Mrs. Monroe.
Hi.
Mr. Neer.
Hi.
Mr. Charlie.
Hi.